And to the of which sentence? With the liberty of justice for all.
Here.
Here.
Yes. Especially the tax. This is about the minutes.
You said proven it.
Oh, yeah. And believe. Oh, yes, one F, one O's D.
Any big questions or discussion? Easy with that.
Yeah.
Pocket.
Yeah.
And first, Franklin.
Yeah.
Treasure, yes. Before we do that, Mr. Franklin, I'm. Off two minutes. Got a lot. Seven, six, seven, eight.
If we don't adopt Rock Rock's law, can we follow Robert's rules or?
Yes, ma'am.
And we said, uh, not in the U.S. person, uh, connecting a lot, uh, during a month, uh, two months, three months. Without some reference, they got used all their time and you wielded something else.
Ms. Ford, it's monitoring that you can, the council has to set that up.
Set that up. Who? He did a fact, he but, uh. And, well, me personally, I don't think that it should be a time because I just feel if if someone is talking out. Your time is up, nobody is trying to determine how much time somebody needs to promise them. And that's just me. Well, I understand that you say this whole.
Yeah, can you, can you, especially in our schools of work?
I get that one thing, it's like everyone will have three minutes. And you might, you might, or that person in there, but, but we wouldn't monitor each other and.
I think it's a good idea. It's kind of why I was that one's. Get timekeeper for sometimes that has come back to her and then. And you can't yield your time to someone else to keep this on track, so I'm not against it.
But it really is up to the council.
I mean, mainly if you're on the business floor. I mean, mainly if you're on the business.
I would, I would number than three to five.
Does anyone have that on the page? Yeah, any other council members that are on the page? Either way.
I just feel we follow Robert's rules or. If I have a floor, you can't just come back and tell me your time is up. Because as I've been reckoning them, I had a floor. You, I don't know.
Any other discussion about the rules of order that we want to go by? Mr. Stanley makes a motion about Robert's rules of order as the rules of order that we. So, um. Yeah, it'd be up to.
What did you say?
We have to start this out at the first weekend of the year, so. At the time.
Traditionally, it's on first and third Tuesdays, and I'm going to continue to do our regular meetings on first, third, Tuesdays of the month.
During the month, certainly, uh, person. It's of the month. And, uh, being set as our. Say it as our nights and times of regular meetings. And third, Tuesdays at six P. M.
First and.
First and third, okay. First and third. Uh, if anybody could try speaking to the microphone, because. Please, ma'am, I, I heard this, this, I haven't heard that sometimes, so. But, and then, uh, getting requests, I mean, of course, I'm sure they're speaking to the microphone. So, anyway, motion on the fourth, four, first. All right, make sure I say this right, first and third, Tuesdays of the month at six P. M., the regularly scheduled meetings. Mr. Ethely, uh, made the motion, Mr. Crockett seconded the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call row.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yeah.
Franklin.
Yeah.
Pocket.
Yeah.
Ford.
Yeah.
Ethely.
Yes.
Five, yes, one S.
All right, thank y'all. Okay, I'm here. Recognize Mr. Derek Turner, our city treasurer, for discussion about the budget. Mr. Turner, you recognize?
Okay. So the council members on C T O. First budget on Saturday. Uh, I talked to several of the city council members. Where it's standing and, um, I, I, I just use their consensus that. Uh, at the present time, that they did not want to, um. Cause we haven't had in-person meetings. And, uh, they couldn't, uh, actually. Back and forth, discuss some issues that. They don't want to give any merit increases at the, at this particular time. Let's count it. So. This budget. Please, uh, for. It's not included. Not have any new. They, uh. Two new police officers, uh, that, uh, they had a grant approved for a federal real program. And so it's just basically, uh, 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 bare bones operational budget. That's not standing. So all the items. I have full confidence that the city council will do it because that's what they did last year. Uh, they passed the budget last year. And they came back and they gave little increases to the people who deserve little increase. Uh, some of the budget and then added some things to the budget. Confidence that the city council would do the same thing this year. Think, and it been just saying that they, uh, is considering that this is the deadline to do it. Uh, just pass this budget. Uh. I haven't received any, uh. As a questions about the budget. And so, uh, it's my recommendation that they. Pass this budget and then, you know, with, with what they have in there already. With the four percent colon, that's basically the only thing that's different than last year. And, uh, so they can meet their deadline. That's, that is my main concern is that the city council meet their February first deadline, just like you met your December first deadline. I recommend that they meet their February first deadline, any changes they want to do beyond that. Uh, with regards to merit increases or equipment purposes like that, then they can do that later. And so, uh, if, if anybody on the city council has any questions about any of the line items. I'm open for any discussion or, or I'm open to any questions.
Ms. Cro- Ms. Crockett actually had her hand up. You're okay, Mr. Miss cycling me.
Yes, sir, the only thing, the only, the only thing that is different about this budget than last year's budget is the mayor. The mayor requested, uh, a proxy rec director. Some of the, a, a proxy rec, a proxy recreation coordinator. Some of the city council members that I spoke to said we can visit that later on, they just want to pass it, so we. They, they are not opposed to it, but they would like a little bit more information. And, uh. But some of the correspondence that I had with them. Yes, sir. Because it was, I spoke with the council members individually. Anything. No, I did not have a private meeting, it's someone who had called me and they talk and they asked me questions. It, it. Well, I mean, city council members, they called me and they. They, they called and they come out in my office and they call me and they text me and they give me their opinions about things. Thank. Several. Five of, five of the six. You said I had, you said I didn't talk to you, and you say, you, you, you the six after five, I mean, six after six. Yeah, you, now you run after six. Now, my door is always open, I see you in the city hall all the time, okay? No, no, man, yeah, let me finish this. And, uh. Off to where? No one really had a more information. It was the same as la- it was same as last year. It was the same as last year, twenty-five, but the mayor wanted seventy-five thousand additional dollars. He wanted two additional employees. Some of the city council members felt that they needed some more information, yes. Because they said it may be, it's not a pro. It's, it's not a private meeting, Joe. Yeah, and, and as a matter of fact, it was. It was, and it's not a private meeting, I can't, when people come down in my office and they want to discuss things. It's not private. They just happen to be in the, the room and they want to discuss some others with it.
Just for clarification.
Oh, here's, okay. Well, I sent you, I, I, I emailed you a copy of the budget.
Okay, that's the one.
This, this is exactly, it's the exact same budget I emailed you on Saturday. Nothing has changed.
Okay, this is the one that you emailed.
Yes, sir.
I, I think it's important to clarify because there's an impression, you can be given an impression that there's something improper about council members talking to the treasurer. If I decide to go by his office, I intend for it to be private. There's nothing wrong with me having a private conversation with him about city business. I can't talk to city council members privately. But I can talk to the treasurer, the mayor, the city clerk at any time that I want to privately. And so, when you keep saying you had a private conversation, you may be giving people the impression that there's something improper about that. And it is entirely, yeah, I, I don't want to give people impressions that there's something, there's nothing improper about that. That is entirely legal.
I had no idea all this was going on.
I understand, I don't know who he talked to either, but I talked to him several times and they were private conversations. And they were intended to be private and any, no, anything that I want to share at the table, I'll share it at the table, but if I want to talk to him privately, I can talk to him privately.
Was the meeting that was held with the ladies speaking about the humane society and all that. At that time, I think it was discussion that a hundred thousand dollars was going to be put in the budget for that purpose.
The mayor proposed.
Yeah, he proposed.
He proposed seventy-five. He proposed seventy-five thousand additional dollars. He wanted two employees and some associated, uh, um. Expenses with supplies and things like that with it. The council members that I spoke to said that they weren't opposed to it. They just wanted some more information. They thought that. In, in our, in, in actuality, they thought a hundred thousand dollars wasn't enough.
Well, that's the way I feel.
Okay, so they thought a hundred thousand dollars wasn't enough, but if it's going to be more than a hundred thousand dollars. How are we going to pay for it? That's what they were concerned about, and so they just wanted some more information.
I think I asked you that question if, if, when we were talking about it, you know, uh.
No, no council member was, was actually opposed to anything that the mayor proposed. They just wanted more information. And they said that we can come back and review some of this stuff.
Thousand is in this.
Yes.
Here.
Yes, sir.
All right, that answered my question.
And none of the other positions were actually in the base plate. So you had to pass a base plate or use to create these positions because the positions that the mayor in weren't, weren't in the base plate.
So, and also, let me take a moment, follow up on what Mr. Ethely said to clarify. The, so the way the budget process works, the mayor submits a budget by December first. Then, the STL says that we should approve a fiscal year budget, which is calendar, you know, January first to December thirty-first. December thirty-first, but we can extend it and operate under the current year or previous year now, up until February first, which is today. And so we had, and this has been sort of the tradition here, uh, in recent, in, in the past several years. Is to extend it through January and have budget meetings to where we go over the budget. Uh, pretty much at the end of every meeting, I encourage anybody who wants to to, to let us know. Uh, if they have any, you know, especially council members, of course, if they have any questions, if they need any information, if they want to suggest, make suggestions and so forth. And then we bring those out, uh, you know, at the next budget meeting or at this meeting. In this case, and to summarize, we are adopting the same, a similar budget to last year, except for the four percent cost of living increase raised for all employees to deal with inflationary pressures. Uh, and we decided to take the new requests, such as animal control and so forth, on a case-by-case basis. Did I say that, did I say it right?
Yes, sir, and like I said, no, no council member that I spoke with was, was opposed to anything that you had proposed in your budget. They just wanted some additional information. No one said, we're not going to do that, they, they just want some additional information. They want, like, because, okay. Since I've been here, uh, I've been the treasurer, this is my second term, we haven't had an animal control division. I don't know. What it takes to run an animal control division. I don't know the certifications that they might have to have, the expenses, I don't know, so we're all guessing. And so we cannot need to know. Like, exactly how much, because a couple of council members said they, they, they think it, it should be more than a hundred thousand dollars. But if it's more than a hundred thousand, where are we going to get that? And so, they weren't opposed to it, they just wanted some more information. Yes, sir, and, uh, the proxy recreation, that was the same thing, they said that what the mayor had proposed was seventy-five thousand, I think. Seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, uh, for a proxy rec director, it wasn't, the salary was like forty-five thousand. But the associated expenses, and a couple of council members said, no, you probably need more than that. And, you know, a, a lot more for a proxy rec, uh, department, and so they just wanted some more information. It, it, they weren't opposed to it, they just wanted some more information.
Budget by midnight tonight. And, uh. I just, I just want to clarify that, I was to you already knew what.
I just wanted to reiterate, they went, none of, the other five, I haven't spoke to you, I, I spoke to each of the five. Uh, in somewhere or another about different aspects of the budget. They, none of them were opposed to anything that the mayor had proposed, they just wanted more information.
I noticed we were having the workshop. And I attended most all of them, but one or two I missed. Uh, uh, there was no opposition to any of the things we were discussing, and I thought everything was copacetic, I thought we were moving along along.
And that's.
The budget and the dollars and all that was proposed.
That's what I see.
I didn't know personally what it's going to take to, to be a animal, uh, uh, control officer, I, I, I have no earthly idea. Uh, of course, that would have to come through the mayor and administration.
But do you want to get in this situation and you don't know how much?
Do what?
Do you want to get in this situation and you don't know how much it's going to cost?
Well, I know it's going to take more than two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, but, but you don't know how much.
No, it's going to take a lot more than that.
You don't know how much, but you don't know how much you. And so they're just going to.
All those details and what you're saying before we allocate it off.
Yes, sir, they said they weren't, they weren't opposed to, they weren't opposed, they just want to know, get a, a better estimate of how much these, uh, the, and how much it would cost to me need the problem.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Crockett, I know you, you held your hand up, did you have a question?
I could just have a statement, but, uh. I'm going to be having a lot of discussions about this because my phone has been doing it, my people are calling me asking us to fund a. Animal control. I need to go on record to say something like that, we, I, I can understand from one, against it. But I don't want the city to be in the same shape that the, um. With the humane society was just in. If we don't know who, who's going to run it, this, at that. Animal control is a twenty-four-seven job. We don't need, we need to know, and it cannot be done by the people who are employed by the landfill. It was said that they could, that the mayor said that they could do that, Mr. Cut, uh-uh, the, the man is. Yeah, the man with A D and Q called and said that that was not possible. I can't remember what his name was, but I know I spoke with him. So, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't think that we need to have a plan of the way that this is going to run. We've already committed to purchasing. Uh, cages or whatever, that's the housing, and we have no way of knowing what's going to happen with them, so they're just sitting out there. That's the money we didn't just throw it in the wind that could have been used to plan. What we need to do, well, I do totally agree that we need animal control. But I personally think that we need a plan set out, we don't just need to just say, here's a hundred thousand dollars. And then you get in and then open and do all this, and you need another hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't have. So I need to go on record to say I'm not opposed to it, I just need someone to show me how it's going to work.
Like Mr. Franklin.
I wasn't, uh, forgive me for not being, uh, on the Zoom calls, uh, due to death of my wife. But what I will say is this, I'm not in favor of us, the city, running an animal shelter. I'm in favor that we should find somebody, I, I, I would, the city could help fund it. But I don't think we should get into business of dogs, I think we should help so, some organization. Uh, you could, I wish you'd do a exploratory committee to get some people who have ran a facility before. I'm in favor of helping fund it, but I'm in favor of us running it. I do think that we have people out there who are competent enough to get out here, uh, and run humane society, and we can help fund it. We can help make sure, I think they said, Ms. Kathy Bissel, uh, said she would give a hundred thousand dollars or something, uh, to get a, a facility or something, start. I'm in favor of us trying to find, uh, you have the Mills on Wheels program, you have Beth Florick, you have a lot of people that I believe that we should. See what, can they come up with some kind of idea to get it off us? They, we can help fund it, and I, I, I'll go, whichever way I can to help fund it, if the city can afford to do it. But I do believe that the city should get in, in, in that, and then I think that there are entities out here that would love to help fund, uh, this. Or, you know, if we can find a facility, some, I don't know if they're going to still use a facility out here on, on the rock road or whatever. But I do think that we should, we should help some, a private organization. Get this done, it should be left on us because it takes our attention, all the other projects that we have, water, sewage, uh, police and fire. I do believe that the city can help fund something. If, if, if you can get a couple of these ladies out there to see if they are willing to, uh, get an exploratory committee together. They come up with a plan and see how that they can help the city, the city can help, we already gave a start of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and I'd be agreed that a hundred thousand dollars could work, but we need to make sure that we can afford it. And if somebody else out there could do it, take the responsibility off of the city, so the city won't have to go through what it went through years before. And what just happened in the past couple of months. Uh, if you could get with those women who, who have successfully got a program going to help dogs. Uh, and, and they could come up with a plan, I'll be happy to work with that, but I'm not in favor of us doing it. The twenty-five thou, even if you decide, hey, you say you had two employees, that can be fixed a thousand dollars, the city could fund two employees. And give another fifty thousand dollars, another certified thousand, that would work, that would help somebody else, so you and I would be in direct contact with my city. When the city failed to do this with the dogs, let the organization handle that. That's just, and I, and I hope that you all can take that into consideration, I'm not, I'm not against, I'm against us doing it. I think that we can fund, we can help fund it, with, we can get some, our grants out there, you, we all know grants run out. But if, Lisa, we have. You, we all know grants run out, but if, Lisa, we have some, uh, the money that we don't give. A couple of private people want to give something, we can help kind of string along until we know. What the organization can do. I think that that's best for us to give those women, uh. Walmart is, uh, we're partnered with trying to give dog food away. We can try to reach out to those and see how can we get it. You know, and I just want to make sure that that I want to help, but I don't want us to get involved in that. I'll. I'll be one of the people who's saying that we can help fund it before it's us. And I'm standing standing because I don't want us to get in it. We may hear that news a couple of years ago. And I don't think that should be one of our issues. I think our issue should be trying to see how can we help fund. Just like we did with the Boys and Girls Club, we helped fund it there. I think it's, we could try to do something like that, so that the liability don't lie on the city. It lies on the entity, but we're trying to help the entity. That's just me.
Thank you, Spark. Okay, other questions, uh, I was, uh, Mr. Turner.
Um, we just talked about in the budget, uh, we're still talking about animal control. Okay, I was looking at this on the, uh. Police department, police department page. Oh, yes, it is page four, at the back, the back, when you go into the project, project this hours. And and, uh, I think my first question is, this public safety partnership and community policing. Grant officers. How was that, uh, how how was their salary determined? What qualifications do they have to have? Because when you look at that, these are police officers that are just starting, that would be getting paid more than police officers that's been there.
Uh, what I did in the budget. I had them at the base pay for a interlevel police officer. I didn't pay them any more than.
A interlevel, okay, okay, so.
Because you.
What about the corporals then? Cause I'm looking at the corporals there, 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 there.
Okay, so you have, uh, we had, we had, we only had one corporal, right? So he had, his salary is in there. So the base pay for the other two corporals, that's the base pay. So that's why those two would get less, because you all would have one in that position. He has received colas, he has received other increases before.
Yes, I understand, but I'm saying, why is the corporals pay less than a interlevel police officer?
I have. I have patrol officer for, I have, uh, twenty-eight and twenty-six. And, uh, have corporal at thirty-one.
No, I'm talking this, uh, maybe I said that wrong. I mean, the police patrol officer first class.
Yes, first class.
Okay, so.
Because you have, we have had patrol officers first class for several years. They have never been promoted, and so they receive colas and raises and. And so that's just what their salary is. And so they will take, so, and so some of those. Patrol officers first class got promoted to corporal, they would keep their pay. But 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 the reason is because we haven't had promotions. And so, uh, my understanding is that, um. They took, I think everybody pretty much passed, passed the exam, right? But we just don't have enough positions to 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 promote everybody, so it has to be some decisions made. But that's, that's why, I mean, they haven't promoted officers before. And so over the years, you know, their their pay had just happened to, uh, increase beyond what their base pay would be.
Okay.
Add anything to that, I agree.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I noticed we have the entry, uh, level for the police officer at twenty. Or was it?
Twenty-six, three, one, two.
Six.
Yes, sir.
And the fire department entry level, thirty-three sixteen. Uh. Why? Do we have that differential?
Fire department, okay. Police department is really paid on a typical eight-hour schedule. Fireman are paid on a twenty-four hour basis. Was that they work in a twenty-eight day period is twenties, two thousand seven hundred fifty, yes, yes, yes. And so, but that is one of, one of the items. That the city council needs to revisit. Because when, uh. When the, um, minimum wage changed to eleven dollars, you put a lot of the intra-level and the. Uh, family, family first class were kind of close to the engineers. And so we just haven't gone back and adjusted the pay scale.
Okay, now, now minimum wage is twelve, right?
We just went to eleven, last year was the, the last pay rate. They did it two years, and so eleven dollars was the last. Unless.
Any other?
I thought it was eleven dollars now, unless somebody could tell me, otherwise I.
We're not, there were a few states that did not permit.
I mean, the federal, I mean, we were, I was, the state of Arkansas's, uh, minimum wage is eleven dollars now.
Yeah, and that was set by both of the people of Arkansas, so it didn't go to twelve this year because of the way it was set when it was. When it was voted on, uh, referendum statewide. And some states, you know, every state's different, basically, but in our state, it it capped out at eleven last year.
And 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 I will state for the record, being American. Uh, route for me is that we we talked to the chief and chief, uh, the police chief. Believes that, 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 the, the, the payroll is competitive. And so he didn't, he didn't recommend a pay increase for the police officers.
I'm gonna tell you like, Perry Mason, you opened the door. When you said the police chief, I'm just trying to find out.
The police chief, not the interim chief, the police chief.
Just about, but.
I'm, I'm asking, so you're saying the. Police chief made this recommendation that he thought this was competitive. The same one that came to these council meetings and did completed with us, right?
He said this last, I mean.
I told you last year that the police chief said it. Yeah, he said, he said he believes, cause y'all, y'all did actually increase their pay. And you increased the pay, he said he thought that the pay that, y'all gave him the pay increase that he recommended. And he said he thought it was competitive, and so he hasn't changed, he hadn't changed, uh, his opinion about that. Y'all increases pay, y'all increased police officers' pay to where he recommended.
Uh, if I could, I would just add to that. So that people, um, watch and understand that police officers do get overtime. Right, and be. Um, one of the, one of the things about increasing the numbers of our place officers, not only do we have more patrol. But some of them don't have to work as much as they have been, and, uh, but they do get overtime. Uh, like all city employees, a hundred percent of their health insurance is paid for, it's not all cities do. Um, and they got a cover last year, and 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 if y'all approve this budget, we'll get a four percent cover this year, which is seven and a half percent. Uh, which doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, and they got minimum wage last year increased. Um, a few other things, uh, I'd like to see them like more also. But I think what, you know, we can't get into this debate about quantity versus quality, and what we want is both. You know, I'd like to see us have thirty uniform certified police officers who are also. Um, great police officers and that we're able to retain them. And when you look at the city, other cities, um, have aggressively, you know, tried to go after recruitment and retention. Uh, we're going to have to do the same thing. Unfortunately, and we talked about this before. Uh, not enough people want to be in law enforcement anymore, and that's a real issue nationwide. So to be competitive, we're going to have to do more, and I hope we continue that discussion, Ms. Clark.
Madam Clerk, what is the resolution number of this budget? One.
Okay, I got that, I got a note. This is, this supplies for parks and recreation.
Say what now?
Parks and Recreation. Page ten.
Okay, that, okay, that is. That's probably, that, that's, uh. Yes, some swimming pool. Parks and Recreation, on page ten?
Page ten.
What's the dollar amount?
Eleven thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty. It says contract labor.
If it says park, that's for swimming pool, uh, lifeguards and tourism. It's, that's like an offset, so if it's, I I thought it was sixteen thousand. Okay, but tourism reimburses us for that, so it's kind of like an offset in the general fund. Uh, uh, I put in the budget whatever you say it is, cause I'm trying to look for it.
Page ten.
It's not on page ten, oh, mine.
I'm talking about page ten on the way, it says statement of revenue and expenditures, tourism.
Basically, that's.
I'm telling you, babe, that's page nineteen.
I think.
That's nineteen.
Okay.
Cause it's what we've been doing. It's the swimming pool program, Mr. Womack runs over summer. We get a grant to cover it, but we still have to appropriate that money. And we pay Mr. Womack, and might be a few lifeguards and that sort of thing. Uh, the last two years, they haven't been able to do it because the volunteers have come from North Carolina, I think. Haven't, haven't come because of COVID.
That is, okay. No, okay, so. No, no, what she's asking about, she's asking from the tourism side. So the tourism side would be, uh, Mr. Womack's pay. On the, in the general fund, the general fund has the, the keys, the, that, that, yeah, the program. And so, but they reimburse everything, and so for the, um. The lifeguards. Yeah, the people that he oversees, yeah, they reimburse us for that. This is for, for his pay. His overtime, cause you know, we had, you had asked me about how, how can you pay. Somebody in this department, and they do something else, and I said, well, Mr. Womack does this, blah, blah, blah. So that's where that's come, that's, that's where that comes from.
So we hope this summer we can, you know, we'll see what happens, but it's, it's been. It's been tough not being able to do that the last two years, and we've had some vandalism at the swimming pool because of it. Um, vandalism at the swimming pool. So anyway, we hope we can get that back on track this summer, but that's, that's what that is.
But Ms. Clark, we have to account for some kind of way, so that's just a line item, you know, that that we put in here.
I have another question.
Okay.
Do you want to ask that a question? Cause I don't want to say, right, you know, cause I just see after, so I'm just looking through it, asking a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, here, serious.
Go page.
Page one of the, uh. I mean, to the budget.
Come on, Sanders. Yes, ma'am.
The, the human resource. Officer got a reception.
Yes. Ms. Sanders. Ms. Manna.
Oh, that's me.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Ms. Scott, let me over, I think you were.
We adopt, uh. Uh, resolution number one. Uh. Uh, budget for twenty twenty-two. Which is an appropriation resolution.
Scott, let me, Mike, please adopt the resolution one, which is the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year operating budget in City Hill and West Hill. Is there a second? A- as presented by Mr. Turner, is there a second?
Well, I, I, I can't say this. I, I told you, I'll just give me a minute. I was trying to see if I have something.
Well, if someone wants to second it, we can take more time asking questions. This word seconds most, okay. Any discussion or questions? We'll wait till everybody's ready. Ms. Crockett.
Um, code enforcement salaries and wages.
Base pay. Uh, yes, ma'am.
It says that the, what, what is the base pay?
For.
Senior officer, as they have, I, I thought we didn't have.
Thirty thousand for the senior officer.
I thought that that thirty thousand was because the senior officer was doing animal control. I thought that's about an issue, two thousand dollars.
But when, when I, when I budget. I budget according to the base pay.
That's what they would make.
Yeah, at the time. But the base pay is thirty thousand. And so, you know, that's their three percent cost of living. I think that's what that.
Well, I have a little fear that we should change it back to.
But we don't, okay, let me look at it, because I should have changed it.
No, you got thirty thousand for the proposal, thirty thousand for twenty.
Twenty-two, yeah, so that's what it is, cause that's what the base pay is.
So, okay, and this, like, the, the, do we still have a code enforcement officer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so. It's a thirty thousand.
The, the, the current, yeah, not twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
The current code enforcement officer makes twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. That's what the base pay is.
So you're saying that if we had a, another, I mean. The position as senior, they would come in and make it thirty thousand?
Yeah, you have one senior at thirty, and you had two just regular code enforcement people at twenty-eight.
That's what I want to know.
Y'all passed the base pay?
I understand exactly what you're saying, but that, because, and I guess the thing is now that. I, I guess this is supposed to be up for discussion, cause we're trying to get it right. What? I, I remember what you said that made the difference prior. But so now if we hire a. Senior officer and code enforcement, they will have to have the animal control skill.
Well, no, not necessarily. The one, the person who was there was, it still is our only state licensed. Uh, person in terms of certain animal control issues, like the dark gun, for instance, you have to have a state license to use a dark gun.
I understand, I, I just had a question. We, what will make the senior officer ma- officer make that issue two thousand dollars?
Uh. What would make the senior officer, the senior option?
Yeah, because you, when, when we did.
I'm sorry, okay. Well, I mean, you just, we have to post it and see who replies and see what their qualifications are, if they come with any certifications. His code enforcement officer requires certifications and classes and so forth. Um.
But that's for any code enforcement, not just the, the senior officer, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And so, you know, you, you got. And basically, that person would be the senior code enforcement officer, most likely because of experience, certifications and so forth. You know, hopefully. But now there's no requirement for animal control or anything else. It's just, and you know, we've had, I don't know how many code officers. We've had too many over the last several years. Um, some are qualified and others, some. Lasted stay longer than others, but, um, but that's, you know, that would be it.
I, I guess I'm not making myself clear. I guess I'm not making myself clear. And this is just me, cause when the thirty thousand dollars was put in there, and I think. And we. It was said that the thirty, the extra two thousand dollars was because they had animal control certification. Uh, next officers all had the same, other, maybe more certifications under code enforcement. So I'm just trying to see, can we all admit at the same level? Because if. It, it was, it was staying, it was, cause the statement was that the thirty thousand dollars for animal control. So we're not gonna. Um, if that's not gonna be one of the requirements, why are we still gonna pay the extra two thousand dollars? That's all I'm asking. Maybe that's actually next.
Well, the only thing I would say is, I don't have any problem with Mom making the same, but I'd rather him go up to thirty instead down to. Because for the same reason that the police department, code is extremely, you know, important position. They have to go out and review all new construction, all plumbing, even if it's not a city project, you know, we're not doing it. It's private sector. They have to go out and make sure it, it, it meets code. So they have to know what they're doing. They have to, you know, be educated, trained, certified. All that kind of stuff. Um, I don't think thirty thousand dollars is, uh, ask, you know, is asking too much for that position. Uh, I don't have a problem with Mom making the same, but I'd rather Mom make thirty than Mom make twenty-eight.
I guess my question is, why was the, the, the present code enforcement not hired as the senior code enforcement officer? If. I don't understand.
Well, I don't think we had posted that position yet. And she applied for the, or the people who applied. I'm not sure how many people we had applied, but we. Trying to remember how many people applied, but, um, but anyway, we hadn't posted it at the time. So, cause it wasn't open, I don't believe.
I believe. So when you, when, when it's advertised for a senior code enforcement, will the requirements be the same? As a regular code enforcement? What would make the difference? I'm just, and this is my.
The only thing that would make the difference at this point would be experience and certifications. If they come with experience and certifications, they're gonna be more valuable. Um, and, I mean, I mean, that's my opinion. If you get somebody who's got experience, and there are people with code experience out there.
No, I'm talking Spanish.
Who have an interest in it. But animal control will not be a published.
So it will be the same requirements that it was for the re- for the other code enforcement? I'm saying, will it? Any different requirement to a requirement to apply for this job?
Other than.
If it's not.
Other than there would be an assumed, for somebody already certified, already, you know, that already has experience.
That's, is that gonna be part of the requirement?
I, I, I understand it, that the animal control part will not be, that, answer that part. The second part, the second part though, is the person. Who had it had gotten their certifications and training. So that was the other reason.
It's, that's gone.
Well, but it's not gone, because we have to have somebody who is certified, state licensed and trained to decode. You can't just send anybody out there to tell a plumber they didn't do it right.
Okay, so you're saying that the, uh.
So it isn't.
Any, anybody that's working as a code enforcement officer has to be certified to do it, right?
You have to have somebody on the city who oversees it, and that's what, that's right. That is right. We have to.
And we are asking this question, cause if it was me and I was the present code enforcement.
I'm agreeing with you.
And I was making twenty-eight thousand dollars, then you posted a job that was two thousand dollars more. I wouldn't wanna apply for this job because I feel that if, if the, if the, certainly, if the requirements are the same. What makes me not eligible for the job?
Well, I, we would, the answer to that is you're gonna have the thirty thousand if you have the certifications and experience. If you don't, you probably wouldn't be eligible for the thirty thousand, but you would be for the twenty-eight. But I, right, I mean, you're really incentivizing somebody who has state certifications that we require. Send somebody out on the job site, said you didn't do that correctly, you're not up to code. So somebody that has that ability. Right, is more valuable than somebody we have to train to do that.
Okay, so.
That's the difference.
So what you're saying right now, the, the present code enforcement that we have, don't have these certifications that would be required. To go out and tell somebody you're plumbing, hook their back up.
Not yet. But she's in the process of getting those things. And we do have a state certified person still on the payroll. Who can oversee and, and make those decisions. They're just not in that position anymore. While she gets her training and certification.
That, that's one of the things that bothers me. That we still, you know, cause that's the same thing with, with, with the animal control. That person still over animal control, and we can take their money and put it on us, but he's running that department, but he's making some money for us. My thing is, if, if these people in code, do you know if they got driver licenses? Do we know, uh, can they, can they drive a vehicle? The first time, Dennis Kattamay, I do think we should, there's a, a lot of stuff. I think what we have done is. We have appropriated money to, to, to positions, and it comes back, it's just like. With the water manager, former water manager, we said that they could up, to obtain. They could, they could get the job, they have to, to attain the certification. And that puts us, and we were still in the bind, we didn't have a certi- certified water manager at one point in time. So I think what we should do is go back and look at that, to make sure people are qualified to do the job, to hit the ground running. Not to have us lagging behind, because those, that, that puts us in, in a bad position. Because the person who used to do this has another job, and that puts him to slack on his job to come and do that job. And I think we should have people, uh, if we go hire people, make sure they got, cause we, I, I'm, I'm not a part of that process. Not, nobody is. I do think that, you know, when we make these, um, uh, jobs, we create these positions. And we should get a copy of the, the job, the job issue and job title, and what the people, what the person's supposed, he or she's supposed to have. We don't get none of that. When it comes back, if they have this, or that, it, it puts everyone in a, in a, in a bad position. This is, this is what I, what I.
And I don't disagree, but, but we have been paid for that. It's competitive to get somebody who's already state certified, licensed and has experience. Probably ain't gonna take a job at twenty-eight thousand. And mine, mine, mine at thirty. Um, but we do have to have a person who's state licensed, certified, trained, because it's an important job. And the person in that, other, that position is filled, is right now sinking and getting that training. It takes, you know, several months to get there. Um, and, and in the meantime, you know, like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to moving them all up to thirty. Um, reducing it and making it harder to get people who are trained, certified and so forth. And it's extreme, we don't have a choice. We have to do this by state law. It's not something we have an option or choice to do. We have to do code enforcement as a city in Arkansas. And to do that, they have to have certain licenses and certifications. And so, uh, I believe that, in my opinion, based on my experience, having been here and the applications we get. People we attract, we need to pay them a competitive right if they're gonna come here with the experience and certifications. Otherwise, we're gonna have to train them and educate them. Um, so that they are legal.
I, I'm doing it. But, but, man, you also have said this is a poverty-stricken town. You've also said that. By that being said, we, we need to be trying to attract more, more ways to make revenue. Because once the, once the, I, I got, I don't know when the coronavirus is gonna let up or whatever. But we have kept afloat during the pandemic payments and stuff that we receive. Let's keep them receiving on a, on a, with, with a decent cash flow. For what this is over, what happens, we need to be trying to figure, cause when we sell, we, we, we'll pick up trash and sell water. What, I, I, I signed the paper, well, we wanna decrease water rates. That's a form of revenue. The city has to create some revenue to keep us, when we able to pay our employees. We're able to service our customers. We can't do it, uh, if we don't have some form of income coming in to keep us afloat. Because right now, du- due to this pandemic, we are being kept afloat. We have to find some ways to make, to, so handle to make some money. I mean, only we are there doing the selling water or picking up the trash. Uh, and then we're taking, tearing down houses, we're not getting much money from that. We're spending more than we're taking in. So we have to figure out, what, what ways can we make more revenue? To make, to, to put us in a position, because we, we are, we are still, I tell you, whatever, once this virus. Let's up, when they stop throwing this, we're gonna be in a little trouble. So we need to try to, how can we make more revenue? So we will have to say, because I believe that we can make more money. We just have to find ways, we have to, we have to tie some people in to, to help us increase, uh, revenue. The financials are good, but a lot of people, as miserable as they are, don't have a household. The household has, people are not having a landline, landline service, has cost us a lot of money. Because we used to get a lot of money for landlines. So people got cell phones and direct TV. We're not getting a lot of money. So in some kind of, we have to find a way to get more resources, to get, to keep us from saying we're poverty-stricken communities. Uh, that, that's, there's some way we, we have to figure it out, how can we do that? So we can, you know, make sure our people are paid correctly, make sure that our, our, uh, the community, the people in it. Are, are being taken care of.
Mike, what's fine? Other, I mean, we're still, just, just a reminder, we still have a motion on the floor, so, but we are in discussion of questions. Ms. Crockett.
Can you tell me what contracted services are, Mr. Oh?
Contracted services, uh, you know, we have one.
I'm looking for the one about parks. The rip park.
It's not in there.
Okay.
I mean, I, I.
Okay.
It, it, my understanding that, after speaking with a few of the city council members, that they didn't want it, and they felt. They felt that it was left to the city employees. I, 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 I removed it.
Thank you.
If you, with, with this parks and recreation, if you decide, if you show us a plan that you had in place. Now, for several years, uh, most have been around the table, parks and recreation. They, 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 they cut the parks, they cut the river park, they did all that. So i- if you're looking for it, we, we try to. See, how can, how can we find parks and recreation? You know, cause we have lost revenue, and we have lost, uh, people. So that, you know, with the sessions coming out, we're not getting the money we normally get. So if you go try to find it, we're trying to, how, where we, where we gonna get the money from? Cause see, that's not how, if you, if you can show me where the money for us, for us, show me how we can pay for these people. Because, uh, in the recent administration, uh, that's when the parks, the parks, uh, during the. With Halloween, Halloween restriction, we would have any park, uh, we, we, we moved those people from parks. Over to the street sanitation department, they cut the parks and all that. So that's what, that happened. So in, in any kind of way, if you're gonna try to find something. Uh, give us a blueprint of what you're trying to do, so we, we'll know, how can we find it? And you, 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 how are you gonna, how, how we can get you funded? Because we don't have the revenue, and we can't find anything. I'm willing to help in any way I can. But if you got four people, a directive, forty-five, fifty, and a, where's that money gonna come from? If you got three labels or two labels, where's that money gonna come from? You're sending some product people, you're sending some lawn equipment, cause they don't have to cut the, the west end of the park, the hill of the Claro, the other park, and the river park. So, you know, history parks, so. I was a whole crew of people in the director, he got out and helped cut the grass. Uh, the, the Claro Dunnis part, uh, the last person I know, he mostly was spraying, and it was decent, decent grass over there. So it's a lot of things that we're gonna do, uh, for what you're asking for. Put a blueprint together, say, this is. Where can we get this from? What have we cut? To make sure we can still find this after the pandemic. We don't want to, to, to pad ours together, then they, they started moving federal funding from us. And we're just out here and taking care of employees. So, I mean, I'm willing to work whatever you have. I need to see some, you know, a blueprint of what you're trying to do with, how is the money gonna come? Uh, right now, I think they're, they're federal grants, but like I'm saying, grants went out. When the grant went out, we still gotta tote that load. So if you can come up with something, I'd be happy to, for whatever you, you're looking for, I just need to know that we can tote the load. After the, the, the grants and stuff went out.
And, uh, man, can I add, just, just to, uh, add on top of what Ms. Quack had asked. I took part of it out, Ms. Quack, but what you see in there in the loan item for the contract service, that is, uh, we have a custodian. And so, uh, what's left in there is the custodial services. But I did take out the, 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 the part about, uh, uh, River Park and, uh, cutting the limits. So what you see in there is just for, for, for the custodian. That's what's remained in there.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Any more questions, comments? Are we all ready? Okay, no objections, Ms. Colro.
Thank Columbia.
Yeah.
Crockett. Forward.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
That's five yes, one absent. For resolution one, the twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we've reminded clients of state law, passed a, uh, operating budget. And since for those who are paying attention at all, that means that employees can get work tomorrow, and they'll get paid. And, uh, services will continue, and then we'll take up the individual issues we discussed, like animal control. On an individual basis going forward, coming weeks. Um, so anyway, thank you for that. So the next, I'm on the agenda, we're gonna move on. Um, ordinance waving bidding on computer services. So attached to your packet. Uh, one of the requests was the actual bids that were made or received. There were two. Uh, and there really only, uh, two significant companies that have municipal discounts and contracts. Out there, and, uh, so that's seen in the packet. And as you'll see, there was a one regarding C D, C D W C. That's, I'm not saying, I, C D W G. That was twenty-seven thousand nine fifty-six oh eight. And there was one, uh, for Dell. There was twenty-six thousand eight sixty-nine eighty-four. So, I can, questions on that, right? Haven't a chance to look it over.
Well, you asked him. It don't, it, it does say you want to purchase a, purchase certain equipment. It don't, I don't see, you know, I might be not. But I don't see where, it says we can't afford it. We, we're working in practice. We don't tell you that this.
It says under section one. And, and they're the company that, uh, with the bidding force came in. There's two bids, and that's the specific bid information that was requested earlier.
What's the difference with the Dell Power Edge and the Dell C T O?
So, the difference between the Dell Power Edge.
K three forty and, uh, C D W G is off of Dell C T O. R three forty. There's a T three four and an R three four.
The Dell C T O and the. Which one now?
Okay, I can see the difference between these two, um, so there's, uh, they're, they're both Dells. Dell is off of one, and the C D W dash G.
Oh, you may ask, the Power Edge three forty, I got you. I'm sorry. Um. Well, I'm gonna tell you the truth, I don't know the specifics of it. One of the reasons we, you know, use them to do bidding is because I understand the specs better than we did. Uh, that answers your question satisfactorily, but. The, I mean, the biggest thing I would say is, um. C D W G, um, is reselling those Dell computers. And so, you know, basically, you've got another mailman in there. They used to produce their own stuff, but. It's getting big, more of an inside baseball thing, but, um, and probably cheaper, a little cheaper is because we're running the records of Dell government. Contracts and discounts instead of do another, yet another layer.
I just don't understand why I can't use that extra.
I'm sorry.
Who wrote the numbers on the deal thing? Because I don't see any other price, but they, how, how I know what them prices don't want?
Who, who wrote the numbers? Well, if you look, you should have attachment.
Like on the C D W, how do you?
If you look at, uh, bottom, and then these pages are not numbered, but, um. You have.
I just see price includes forty percent of. Three days, not business.
Right.
But then rest this. If I went on, he was three thousand six hundred ninety-five, what's that?
It's, that's basically what the installation and shipping, uh, configuring during network and all that.
So what is not in there?
Is that?
Why is that not included in the bill?
It is included. People doing the bidding on people that were trying to do that. We're asking style computers, set it up on a network, configure it, uh, all that stuff. That's, that's the reason that price is the same in both bids. So they're just including that because that's the true appropriation. But if you're looking at.
In both bids, I don't see that in this other B.
On this, on this master, on this, does, does everybody have this page here? So you'll see thirty-six ninety-six project fee is under both of them. The, so the only difference is gonna be in the, this cost of the servers that are being purchased. And one is, this will pointed out, is direct from Dell. Uh, Pirates two thirty, two, two, T three forty is twenty-three thousand one seventy-three eighty-four. The Dell CTO R three forty through C D W government is twenty-four thousand two sixty oh eight. So it's pretty close, but it's cheaper to go with Dell Direct. And then the, the actual, you know, estimates themselves. As far as the hardware is, is attached.
I don't know, I, I guess I just look too deep into stuff because. But you were gonna send me something saying. They're saying that this is how much it's gonna cost. I think that when it was sent, it should have included all of this. This I'm y'all type of thing. This was, this I'm saying, so how, how, and I'm, and I'm, like I said, I guess I, I think too deeply. But how do I know that I hear where it says twenty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars is not? Because they don't describe, they can say what you're buying today, don't tell you about installing and none of that. Why is not all of it not included in the bill?
Because this is the hardware bid. The, the active actually install, installing, computing, all that's gonna be the same.
No, I'm saying, who's gonna do the installing and the figuring?
The, um, company that's in the ordinance, V C three incorporated.
Oh, so that's a different person.
V C three incorporated is who did the bidding for us and on behalf of two main companies that, that have government. Did specifications, so you got hardware costs and that's what you see in your packet. One is from C W G and one is from Dell Direct, even though they're both Dell computers. One is either the other, the setup configuration, all that is gonna be the same. Either way. Uh, most of our computers are still relying on Microsoft Windows version. That's no longer supported by Microsoft for security purposes. Um, I don't really like talking about this stuff on Zoom, but, um, what we're trying to do is. Is, is update, modernize our computer system so we can protect our city from intrusions. And also be adaptable, suitable for software and all those things that are versions that come out. That no longer are supported by those older software and computers programs. And of course, everything today is on these things, so.
Yeah, I got something from V three saying that they go, whoever this is, this is gonna be a, uh, project fee to thirty-six ninety-six.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Why we don't have?
Well, that's what we put in front of you there and that's.
No, sir, it's not, it, uh, this is the paper that showed me the thirty-six. None of these other papers showed me anything about this thirty-six ninety-six.
Um, well, that's their fee, I'm not sure what, what we should. Our, our understanding was, you know, he wanted the bids.
Yes, sir, and I, when I asked for this, I asked that it be itemized, that they show us what they are gonna give us. For the price that they want. Now you give us this paper. From this project fee, if V three is charging thirty-six, they should have a, something showing that this is how much I'm charging. You'll be charged to install it and to set it up. This, this could be a number you found and said, well, put on that thirty-six ninety-six because I need to buy me a new pair of shoes. It, it, it's nothing in writing.
Well, I mean, you can reduce it from about thirty-six ninety-six if you want to and just to prove the hardware estimates that you do have the information on as far as I'm concerned.
But where we go, okay. Jesus, be a fan, you wanna be quiet, I'm so. Because that, we approved the hardware and don't have about any style, but that's just some sitting on the corner.
Well, I mean.
When I asked for this, I asked for it to be itemized to show what services we were getting for the money that was being requested.
V C three is the company that did it.
I don't.
V C three is the company that will install them, configure them.
Okay, V C three.
That's their rate, regardless of what hardware package we go with, the cheaper hardware pack, package was the Dell Direct.
Okay, do you have anything that says V, whoever this is with you, V C three or whoever they are? Do you have anything that shows where they told you that if you purchase this stuff? I can install it for thirty-six ninety-six. That's all I'm asking. I just wanna know where it came from.
We have an email from the person who represents them.
Okay, while we don't have it, that's all I'm asking. I just wanna see it. That's all I'm asking.
That gives, and we can make a copy of the email if you want.
In case of incidentals. That's why I said that.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. It's, I, I just wanna see it in writing. That's, and it, it might just be me, so you might, I might can take a vote on it and it might pass. But I, I, I need to see something.
Well, would you like a copy of this email?
What email? I want it to be, what they said, do it said.
It just, it just is quoting their price to install. It's what it is. That's, that's where this amount comes from. This is the original document that this amount comes from, the thirty-six ninety-six.
Okay, so why we didn't have all of it together? Uh, this, this definitely, I, I, I guess.
But I mean, my question is, we do have it here. Do you want to see my copies?
I asked for this the last minute, we was here. Why is it given to us in portions and it's not itemized? Because that's an email, that's not a contract.
But it.
Contract.
We don't need a contract. This is, this is the estimate broken down. But I can get you the, the email that shows their price for installation. That's the only documentation we're gonna have.
So you telling me that they gonna come down here just because they told you thirty-six? Nobody's gonna have anything that says, and I'm just using names and don't, don't quote me on that. I'm saying that this is what happened. I wonder Cracker will install such and such a thing at the price of. Three thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars. You just gonna go on the email that says, this is a quote.
That's all right. If, if this is the, if this, if this, I mean, you're asking a question, I'm trying to answer.
Okay.
There's no contract required. That's just the amount that they charge to, to, to configure and install this much hardware in our city. And this is the only documentation that exists. If it, uh, you know, if it, if it changes, then yeah. We'll have to, to answer for that, but I don't suspect that it would. I mean, if you had a contract for every single thing we do in the city, just so you could have a contract.
No, 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 ma'am.
It would grind to a halt.
Don't do that, ma'am. Don't do that.
I'm, I'm just.
I asked for, I asked.
We don't have a contract on this thirty-six.
But it should have been, okay, if V three was the one that got these estimates. At the bottom of, of the, 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 the people's, the C W Dell, I almost just said Dell, so because I can't think of it. At the bottom of that contract, it should have been had V three installation fee thirty-six ninety-six. To be added on it. Don't type something up on a piece of paper and then it looks, this just seems like you throwing numbers at me.
But we're not paying V C three for the hardware. We're paying the company that won the bid, though, if you gotta prove it. The, the, the twenty-six thousand nine sixty-nine, but y'all have to prove it because of the amount of deals. The thirty-six ninety-six is installation service fee that you would have with just about any kind of installation like that. Telephones and a lot of rest of that stuff. Um, or the ones who, who wouldn't start. Well, I believe that we know, I mean, we could go, it's pretty simple, but we could get my cops out of it anymore.
Some incidentals would be problems you run into such as when you're doing installation or anything, wouldn't be hotel fees or meals or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, yes, man, there's nothing in this beyond the thirty-six ninety-six like that. But that's what's, that's what the cost would be for them to install, configure and all that.
Yeah, I might need a copy of that email because, uh, this ain't making sense to me. I just need it to make sense, make, make, make sense.
What, what am I not answering? The.
When I, when I.
I understand. It's not a contract.
I'm not asking, I, this, this is not a contract with Dell because it has not been entered into. But I wanted to see, I didn't want to see somebody write on a piece of paper, pencil and add the extra fee. That should have been included in the fee for installation charges.
Um, I'm just gonna, I mean, they bid out the hardware.
You told us this fifty times, Mary, I, I guess.
They, I'm not sure what, where the confusion is, I guess. It is in front of you. If you want to reduce that from thirty thousand down to, you know, say twenty-seven, I'm okay with that. I'm not too concerned about it, uh, going beyond that. If that's more precise, it's okay with me. If you wanna do that. If you wanna take the project fee out of it and just do the hardware, I don't have a problem with that. But, uh, do you think we have to get this hardware installed in our city for all the reasons I said earlier? So, while we're writing on those copies, any other questions about?
Yeah, I got a call.
Quote for the bids.
Don't you read it?
Did I see it right here? It says projected fee.
The over thinker, once again. Am I allowed to read this on here?
So I guess the question I would have is, is the issue with the hardware or the service?
They, they, I think she gonna make it out properly. It's just the email.
Just might be some more copies. We had, we had, I think, enough copies, but not for, if, if you count the four of us, three of us.
I would try, but I don't really have the option. We use a quoting system that pulls in Dell information, so it would be the same thing. What I can do is maybe go out to dell.com and add the same items and make a different quote. Similar to what I did with C D W, with their work.
So that is in response to, uh, your request for a breakout of bids for the hardware.
So this I am saying, just went out to Dell and said that he can get this stuff from C D W. He made up this thing, not C D W.
My momma was telling me about, the estimates that you have, the actual estimates that you have are from. Yes, ma'am, but he got them from the contacts.
And so, uh, to say, and make a different quote similar to what I did, I do it, not C D W.
But that, what he's doing is getting the quote from them.
Okay, you got the explanation.
No, I'm not sure. You're making something more complicated than it really is.
No, no, sir, no, sir.
The, the bottom line is bids were gotten from, uh, two companies on the hardware. That's the biggest expenditure. The other question is the service to install and configure thirty-six ninety-six. Uh, the. With V C three, um. And I don't object to you reducing that to twenty-seven or twenty-eight or something like that, if that would make you feel better, then, uh. I'm not too concerned about the, the overage or the extras. But I am concerned about not doing this moving forward because it exposes our city to a lot of, a lot of things.
Now, you're telling me you're showing us here the price.
We were given in custody of the private and personal information of a lot of people. And we see data incursions across the country every day by companies that spend an awful lot more money on this than we do. So, um, and cities in Arkansas and all across the country, it's becoming a regular story. So we do have, we, it was our responsibility to be good stewards of their private and personal information. And part of that is to make sure we have adequate security in our information technology that collects that information. Uh, and protects it from incursions from outside attacks and manipulation and uses which, and, uh, uh. Ransomware, which has been a real problem. I mean, that's the reason for this. Uh, that's the reason we need it. We haven't had updated computer systems here in quite a while and they're no longer supported. By the companies that like the world once, uh, when they were first purchased, so. I'm not happy answering questions, but it's extremely important to our cities, our citizens and their personal information and we protect it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand exactly what you're saying and as an elected official as a council, it is my duty. To make sure that the citizens, the taxpayers' money is being spent appropriately. So all I'm doing is asking, you gave me this email saying that you had a quote in it. This email does not have one dollar sign in it, does not have any price in it. And maybe I got the wrong email.
That's good.
Three. Well, I don't have that email. That's not what y'all gave me.
Like that this price, um, see, he's talking about the, the two bids for the hardware does not include our project fee. The quoted three thousand six ninety-six.
I don't have that email. Let's not remind you of this.
It talks about the, the hardware prices and then we put it in summary form.
Things would be, there are only two options. Are these only two companies?
Those are the two main companies that offer government discounts. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number one twenty two?
Ordinance number one. For year twenty twenty two and ordinance.
This is like my smash to put ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty two. On third and final rating. Flashing dash for lack of second.
And and can I, can I, can I say something because I got the email now because. On on this paper right here, the one that the quote that you gave was from Dale, you're saying that it's gonna cost twenty six eight six nine because you add that project fee. Email I guess is using direct from Dale and including our project fee, the price will be twenty two two fourteen eleven.
So.
This is including their project fee. Now, and the project fee too.
Note that this price does not include our project fee. I'm just reading the email like you are. Tasked to direct quote from C D W for the same hardware and licenses. Note that this price does not include our project fee, talking about the hardware. Of the quoted thirty six ninety six. Add this to C W, C D W price, and it'll be the price if we want. If we went with C W around twenty seven nine fifty six. Using direct from Dale, that including our project fee, the price was twenty two, was past tense. That was the original quote. It's since gone up.
But the way they're saying that the price that they're giving you from Dale includes the project fee, so why are you adding a project fee too?
Well, but it went up since. Their original estimate that we can be with was the cheaper estimate. Since that time, they have gone up on the price.
Yeah, it's now twenty three thousand one hundred seventy three, but y'all, the thing y'all gave me said twenty six now. I'm just trying.
That is the new price. This was the price.
So it's now, so now that when they give you the twenty three thousand, it went up, what, five thousand now? Because the way I, and this is me, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave long after I make this statement. The way that I read it, if they're using Dale, the project. Fee is already included in the quote. If they're using C D W, you have to add the thirty six nine. Now, I might be reading it wrong and I might have some English majors in here that can. That's it, this sentence will make it make sense, but okay, thank you.
The original quote, as it says, was twenty two thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and one cents, including the project fee. As you said, that was the original quote. This is the re-quote. Prices have gone up, inflation is shifting, the supply, demand, the longer we wait, the longer it's gonna go up. And that's basically the point that the C D W price is the same, but the debt price is still cheaper. As you can see with the estimates, the actual estimates in the hardware. You can see what the price of the hardware is yourself. This is what you asked for before, the actual hardware estimates, and that's what we have here, so.
From C D W, you don't have from.
Yes, ma'am. At at the end of, at the end of this, the bottom of this page, you'll see the twenty three thousand one seventy three eighty four. After the forty percent discount. And that's at the top of this page, the cover page, twenty three thousand one seventy four. Then you add the project fee, and that's where you get the twenty six, but it's still cheaper, even though its price has gone up than the, than the C D W G quote.
It does not say that they need you to add no project fee to the quote from Dale. It says that they are including their project fee in the quote from Dale. So it looks like to me that the quote from Dale should be twenty three one seven three point eight four, not twenty six. It does not say anywhere in anything that you have given wonder. That they they want to add a project fee for Dale. He said that he will add a thirty six ninety six project fee if you use C D W. Don't try to make me think I'm retarded because I'm not.
I'm not trying to make you think anything. I'm just trying to point out that the price twenty three one seventy four is from Dale. It's at the top of this page. It does not include, you can see what it includes. It does not include the project fee. That is the increased fee since we're writing it on time and that's okay, but. So there's the computer situation reminds me. Pretty serious. So I'm not, you know, the price is what it is. It's broken out. You got the hardware estimates that you requested. When you wait longer, it's only gonna get more expensive, most likely, in this economy. And the bigger issue, though, is what we expose the taxpayers to. If we don't update and upgrade these computers, which should have been done years ago.
Miss, miss, Miss Ramsey. Do, do you or Miss. Have something shown that if we use the Dale quote, there should be a thirty six minus six. Project be added to it because the email that I wrote. Shows that the project fee is included in the day of that, I mean. Now, I'm just asking a question and I'm just trying to, I just want to be a billboard.
I was trying to get a document print and the printers genuine, but initially we provided the. And then y'all came back and said you wanted the equipment, you know, bid out and rub it down differently. So that's when we saw. That, you know, we did that, that different equipment prices from different sources. So. And it just had to do with how their system generated and flowed. Something was neat, but I'm trying to get that original one to print out and I'll.
Okay, so what? I guess, okay. Can we put this on the next agenda?
All right. There's no objection. Ms. Crockett wants to put this off until the next agenda and we'll discuss it and see if we can get that document to print. Any other questions that anyone else has on this because it is extremely important for the city. So that the next meeting, because we're trying to answer your questions, but. As best we can.
Okay, Ms. Helen, can I just ask that? What you have is showing the itemized and everything that it would cost for whoever to do this. That's buying the equipment and their fees and all of it. Okay, thank you.
I would suggest that's exactly what this is. That's exactly what this is.
That's a piece of paper that saying the state that she typed.
But it's also attached. The detailed breakout is attached.
No, it is not. It shows nowhere where they're charging thirty six thousand, be thirty six.
Which is what you asked for, the hardware quote. They don't, the hardware companies don't do the installation.
You ain't, I don't care how you put it, you're not gonna make me see what you're saying. Because I I know it does not show in anything that you have presented to me. And like Mr. St. Colomny says, somebody else might have something different. And if they do, I just ask that they share. But the, what you presented to me does not show where V three. It, in the email that you gave me, it states that if you use C D W, there will be a thirty. Three thousand six hundred ninety six dollar project fee added. The email that I got states that if you use Dale, the project fee is included. In the estimate.
The old estimate. Big difference.
Okay, well, show me the new estimate where it ain't.
Well, it's, that's right here. Let me finish trying to ask your question. Ms. Helen is trying to get you something like what you're, you're saying. All I'm asking is there anything else required by the city council about this project before the next meeting? Where we're gonna put it on another agenda. That's all I'm asking tonight.
And I, all I ask you, please, don't give bits and pieces. Please give what has been asked. I'm asking that you show me. The amount of the equipment from Dale, all of this, plus where V three will. Charge their project fee if it's separate from the quote from Dale, as they stated in the quote from C D W.
Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is approval to increase the system. Police Chief Saturday to interim chief level. First of all. Reminder of here to point out that we, if you didn't notice from public, we have a defibrillator in the highway. What we never had in the city hall before, and there's also one in. At the street sanitation department and I believe one at the plaza building. Chief Smith, I would go in Chief Smith, who we had a going right party for today, was able to. To help us, help us secure those with the grant. And it's important because we did have somebody, I'm understanding, I don't believe it happened since I've been mayor, but somebody who passed by the heart attack. At street and sanitation department. And of course, normally without pandemic. When we have driver's license tests and court in here, we have a lot of foot traffic. So I just want to point that out. We have a defibrillator N C L, and thank you to. The fire department, also helping us get that installed. And I'm just pretty excited about that. Having said that. Chief Smith's is, as you know, retiring and. Chief Byfield as the interim chief. And what this is, is to ask that his salary be adjusted to the base salary for police chief while he is interim. Any questions, discussion?
I don't, I don't, what, what is the base out in this town?
My comment was the base pay is fifty five thousand, so. That's what the base pay is. Uh, you know, because. The harbor tech, I mean, the harbor was, yeah, so if you move to the base pay, I want to make that correction for you, but base pay is fifty five. No, I don't think so.
I think you make fifty two thousand.
Request.
The current chief is making sense.
To make what the current chief is making, and it was seventy thousand a year. So thank you, Ms. Turner, for clarification.
Uh, can I ask a question? And this just me. As us being elected officials. The only way I knew the chief was retired because he put up a post that he made the news. I didn't, I don't know about nobody else. It it never officially came that, you know, we got a police chief that's leaving. And I believe I just heard you say that. You were, uh. There you go, right there. I just heard you say that y'all had a party for the outgoing chief on today. Uh, you don't think that it should have been like invited, even I probably wouldn't have came, but I'm just saying, you know, it's like, it's secret, it's like. Is, is, I thought we had, uh, had agreed that on each agenda, we have something that shows new employees and. Going out employees. I have not seen that yet. Because like I said, the only way I knew the chief was leaving because I saw it on the news.
We also emailed it out to all of you. As far as the party goes, I didn't, we didn't organize that party. It was organized by the police department, so. I didn't know who was invited, who wasn't, so you'd have to address that. You'd have to address that to the folks at the police department who organized it.
Okay, then that's okay.
That I feel like we're not privileged to. We were asked to do a lot of things at the table, and then it's a surprise. I mean, I, it's, it's just as well as when Officer Travis Wallace passed through. There was something and and we weren't notified about it. And people are upset, saying that we don't care about what happened. It's a lot of things that just happens that I don't, I'm not trying to steal the shine or, you know, I. But we're, we're, we're all just as equal at the table, and I do what was certainly happened to employees, even myself and the passion of my wife. I tried to make sure I got out to every daughter. I didn't want anybody to exclude or do anybody feel like I didn't care. And I do thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers during that time. And then, you know, I try, I, I, I think we should do better and communicate life-changing events or events for our citizens, for our employees. Because we're all a family, just because we have a disagreement. I think we all should be, you know, put on notice, because I appreciate everybody for their thoughts and prayers, and it's still a difficult time for me. And I need more prayers or anything, but I, I, I'm not, I wouldn't dare shit, shit anybody out. Because I want people to understand that losing a loved one or losing anything in muted, at the first round of town, but I think I've lost more. Family members since I've been here. I've lost two brothers, you know, two, two sisters, a brother and a wife. And a son. And I've still been, I, I, I still try to make sure that I'm here. I still try to make sure that I share my grief and everything that I go through with y'all, and I still come here to serve. And I don't, I, I think we should include whatever happens, birth, death, life-changing event. I want to be a part of it because tomorrow is not promised to none of us. Even if the chief retire, I think. We have disagreements with, that he's an employee, I said it, we said his salary. And then we should be invited. When he became chief, not only him, but Mr. Under Mayor Holloway, he was invited. Me, Mr. St. Columbia, all the rest of us was invited to this big goal. And we, 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 we actually got rid of the opponent chief that had him outside.
Yeah, I understand, Ms. Turner, but I did not organize the party. I didn't do the invitations. I didn't organize the party today. So I don't know who they invited, who they did, but it was something put on by the police department.
But I, I, and I wouldn't accuse you of that. I don't want you to think that I was accused of that. I'm just saying, anything that happened. Or something, yeah, because I appreciate, I appreciate everybody in here for the outpouring of support for me. And it's still, like I said, it's still, it's still a hard time, but I wouldn't dare shit anybody out of anything that happens, even if. You know, God, if something has happened, the, the city council members, the mayor, including the mayor and the city attorneys. Chairs and the city clerk have all been overwhelmingly supportive to me, especially my colleagues, the city councilmen there. Were over and beyond for me. And I don't think I'd be as strong as I am if I didn't have people like that to just say, hey, how, how are you mentally? After the flowers were there, die, and the phone call stopped, you still need some form of support. And, you know, it, it was hard getting here tonight. To try to make sure I could be here. So I just, like I say, I, I, I thank everybody. I don't care who it is or what she does. I don't care about the licks that she throwing in me. I appreciate every single body. And I mean, this, we're family. I don't care. Race doesn't separate us. We're still a family. We are a fuss and fight when we get the business of the city done together. Listen, I, I, I'm just appreciative. I just want people to understand it.
An email, because in the quote, it says twenty two, and that's, that's including everything, twenty two two four two eleven. And in the email that's dated, December the center. And in the email that's dated, December the seventh, the statement does say, using Dale and including, and including our project fee, the price was twenty-two two fourteen. The original quote is there, and I'm missing, I must be missing another. It was an email, but I didn't, I don't, I didn't get it, I do it.
We're gonna put that on the next agenda. So if you would follow up maybe with the email or phone call or something, give us specifically what your questions are, we'll try to get them addressed by the next meeting.
It's not an email.
Increase the interim, interim, whatever it is.
Ms. Crockett moves that we.
Assistant chief to the, increase to the chief salary.
Increase the salary of the assistant police chief as while he was interim chief to the level of the existing police chief. And seventy thousand. And Mr. Frank, a second to motion. Any other, any questions or comments about the motion? It's not Colorado.
Yes.
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 It's almost eight o'clock. Do y'all wanna do the fire marshal and lawsuit tonight?
What, what, what was the discussion on the lawsuits?
Well, we don't have Ms. Valier, so I don't really know how to answer your question. We have some people out tonight due to concerns, health concerns and issues.
Miss, this is on the agenda. Can you tell us where it's at? What, how, how common?
I honestly don't know. Man, I, I really don't. I have to.
We ain't got nothing from the municipal. You ain't got nothing from the municipal league.
I have not seen anything from the municipal. And I haven't, as far as I know, they haven't sent me anything. If they have, I haven't seen it, Ms. Crockett. If they have sent it to me, I promise you, I have not seen it, nor have I, you know, I just checked my email before this meeting started. I haven't said anything.
Mr. Turner, have you got anything to say in this hell?
No, we don't have anything official. We, we, you know, we.
Saying anything about selling this lawsuit or none of that? Suggesting that we might sell this lawsuit.
We don't have anything official.
Okay.
Well, okay. I didn't even have anything unofficial, but.
Yeah, what we was gonna discuss?
Well, the other issue is the fire marshal position.
Now, I'm telling what we was gonna discuss, discuss on this John Doe stuff, if y'all ain't got it.
I mean, we thought, I, I spoke to the city attorney earlier, and he couldn't make it, and so we thought he may have an update, but but like I said, we don't have anything official from the municipal league.
And I don't mind, but the fire marshal issue is mine, so I don't mind if we wanna move that to the next activity till we can. But I would ask you, any questions or issues you have in advance of that meeting about the fire marshal, let us know, so we can try to have that ready for you.
Yeah, we need, well, I need the, the, I mean, the pay, the description of the job, all of this kind of stuff, if possible.
We'll try to get that for you. Anything else to think of between now and then, let, let us know. We'll try to have it ready, but we're moved. There's no objection. We'll make the fire marshal position as well as computer services bidding ordinance to the next agenda, as well as the John Doe versus city lawsuit. All right. Any other business to come for the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourned.
I think Mr. Adley would maybe adjourn.